Welcome to Stoughton Spotlight. I'm your host, Jeffrey Pickett. We're continuing our Conversations with the Candidates series where I'll be sitting down with the residents running in contested races in this upcoming April Town election. On this episode, we are featuring the Race for School Committee where I'll be joined by one of the candidates for School Committee. There are three candidates running in that race and there are two seats open in this upcoming Town election. So, let's introduce you to the candidate. Welcome, Sandra Grope.
Thank you for having me, Jeff.
Thanks so much for coming by. You're new to the political process. This is your first time running, so let's just give you a chance to introduce yourself to voters, tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you decided to get into the race.
Okay, great, sure. So, I'm a parent of two students that attend Stoughton Public Schools. I've been in Stoughton for 20-plus years. My husband and I own a home. We've owned the home together in Stoughton for 13 years. Our girls are 11 and 9, and I've been very active in the West School community. I am the PTO president. I've served two consecutive terms as the PTO president. I was the co-chair of school council as well, which was great. And also, I was part of the search committee for two of the principals, the last two principals that were hired at the West. So, I've been part of some of the, I guess you could say, a little bit of the political piece where, you know, you have to deal with that, the smaller school community. But, you know, I've done that, but there's some other volunteer things I've done. I'm also a volunteer teacher for the Catholic parish as a Stoughton. I've done that for the past two years as well, so that's great, and I enjoy that a lot. And, you know, also, you know, just if there's events, the new high school as an example, you know, learning about that and wanting to support that, I've volunteered to hold signs in the center of town and be a vocal part of that as well. So, yes, new to this political view, the school committee, but, you know, a big supporter of the Stoughton community as a whole, and especially the West School community coming from there.
Sure. And before we get into the school committee race, you mentioned, you know, with the West School. Talk about the importance of having administrative, having some stability with administration, able to keep a principal for a longer stretch of time, which the West School, you mentioned just in a short period of time, you've already been part of two search committees. So, you know, that's something that the West School has had a lot of change over at that position.
Absolutely, and that's a great question. So, I've been there for six years. My girls have been there for six years in total. I've been on the board of the PTO for five of those six years, and in those six years, we've had four principals. So, that impacts the kids and the teachers, and there's great teachers at that school. They're phenomenal. So, you know, me being in the position that I was as the PTO president for going on second term, took a lot of adjusting. Now, my experience with it is you have different personalities, and all of those principals had extremely different personalities, but you have to be able to work with it and look at both sides, you know, where are we coming from, from the PTO? Where are they coming from? What I was able to see also from the teacher's perspective is where are they coming from? You know, we have teacher reps that are part of PTO that would come, and, you know, you feel for the kids, for the teachers, because you're constantly, as I had to, adjust to the way of thinking to that new person coming in. But, you know, I think that the current principal that we have, she's there for a long time, long-term. She's great, you know, being part of that and ensuring that we have someone that fits every need. Being in the prior, you know, search committee, we chose what we thought was best based on conversations with both parents and teachers. We had, you know, different groups to talk about, what did you want out of this? And ultimately, I think that what we have now is something, it's stability, the teachers being able to have a voice, you know, and I think that's what's going to bring everything to fruition. I've seen subtle changes this year. It's our first year, but you can see that it's going in the right direction, and that's going to be huge. And I have to tell you, my girls, they would switch up the names. They'd forget the name of the principal. They'd switch it up and, you know, call it the -- and that's not a good thing. You want that stability for the kids, too. So, I'm excited. I think that this is going to be great. You know, my girl's, my youngest, who is now in third grade, ugh, scary, you know, she's going to have that, you know, consistency. And with the teachers at the West, they're phenomenal. You know, when you have the consistency of a principal, you hope to retain and keep those teachers, you know, the good teachers.
Sure. And now, it's going globally with the school committee race itself. What do you hope to be able to do on the school committee if elected? You know, what are some of your visions and aspirations on that, for that committee?
Yeah, so this is where, you know, I'm just going to say that I don't have a specific agenda. I don't have an axe to grind type thing, you know. My, what I do for work, I'm a full-time working mom. You know, my husband, he works full-time. I'm a project manager for a financial institution. Being a project manager is you have to be able to get everyone to the table to agree to a common ground, right? So, with the school committee, what I've, what I've seen is, you know, there's been a lot of bumps in the road over the past six years that my girls have been in the school. And I think that all of the things that I've participated in at the West thus far has brought me to this. This past June, you know, I do make it a point, if I can't make it to the school committee meetings, I do look at their agendas. And this past June, at the end of the school year, I had noticed something on the agenda about Brockton Neighborhood Free Clinics. I read about it, and I'm, and if you, I know you're on social media. I'm not a big social media person, so I sat and I strategically stopped and I thought, I don't know how I feel about this being on school grounds.
And just to give, for the viewers, just some informational background on that organization.
Sure. So, the Brockton Area Health Clinics, it would be, it was a grant from the state, so basically it would be modular units that would have been attached to the West Elementary, the middle school, and the high school, which, assuming the new high school, because we're building a new high school. Those modular units wouldn't be an addition to the schools, so I don't think that it was well-known in the community. The discussions weren't being had at the time for folks to really know what was coming. But there would be a need for water and electrical, which would tap into the schools. A lot of things that I don't think were vetted with the community and, you know, what we needed to know. So, it would be open to the public throughout the state. Whoever would want to come, you could go to the Brockton one, that's the city, and the city of Taunton, you could go to the one that's there, and they wanted to bring that to the Stoughton schools. It would be open in the mornings. They were going to have, I did a lot of research. It was up till 3:30 that morning trying to figure out, what do I do? And, you know, have specific hours for the teenage, you know, teenage folks. My main concern with it wasn't that there's a free clinic coming to the town. I think that's great, and I think there's a need. If there's a need, absolutely support it. But it's the schools. That's where I had a hard time with safety. Safety concerns, being from the West, I'm sure you heard about the media, where we had parking, you know, walking on the busy streets. So, I had concerns with safety with parking, you know, my being a parent that volunteers, my husband volunteering. We've had to be quarried every year and fingerprinted to chaperone a field trip. These folks that would be going to these modular units on school grounds wouldn't, right? So, I had a concern with if children are out during recess, if they're walking into school and there's a line waiting to get in, you know, things like that, that I felt needed more discussion, needed to be broached. And, you know, I also had, you know, I'd heard that in Brockton, same type thing had come to them previously, and they voted no. So, this was something I felt that the public needed to know, so I came out and I really tried to make it, you know, positive and just note, this was my concern, and got a lot of support, over 400 signatures in, gosh, less than 10 hours. It was, it was wild, something I've never ventured to do, but what I felt was important is that these are, you know, this is, these are our kids, you know, and these are our neighbors' children, and I just don't think it's the right, you know, the right forum to have that.
And so, that was something you got involved with?
Yes, and that's what, I think, put that bug in me to say, you know, I don't want to sit on the sidelines, you know, and look at, you know, how are things going in the schools anymore from, you know, a different perspective across, across Stoughton Public Schools. And now, it's time to get involved, you know, and this is why I put my name in the hat to run for school committee. I think that I'll be a great, you know, person to be able to sit with folks and talk logically and, you know, factual. It's all about being logical and factual and being able to work together. It's what I do for work now, in my, in my existing job as a project manager, and times people don't agree, but you have to agree to disagree, or you need to look at where they're coming from. You have to.
Well, certainly a big issue that's facing the school right now, and I believe you are at the February 14th school committee meeting that was held in the auditorium, is the, dealing with the anti-Semitic acts at the high school. And I just first, I'd like to get your take on, as a parent in the school district, but not at the high school.
Yep.
Do you feel the community should have known about this earlier? These incidents happened back in November, right around Thanksgiving time, and really didn't come to light until the end of January.
Yeah, yeah. So, I knew you were going to ask me about this. You're funny. No, and I think that's good that you're asking. You know, I have a couple different ways of looking at it. Not knowing the real information, like not knowing, only knowing what I've read on social media, you know, I say, you know, coulda, shoulda, woulda isn't going to help us, right? Looks like there was a third-party investigation, and it would be interesting to see what came of that. And I know we can't, I know that, and I know if it gets, ultimately, the STA is finally brought to the school committee and it gets there, it'd be nice to see those details. It seems like folks are more geared towards that, on what happened on that end, but for me, myself, honestly, you know, it's heartbreaking. When that was happening, I had seen the news about spray painting on statues in Brockton at a Catholic church, and this was happening, and I'm Catholic, and sitting there and watching it, and I was like, I almost kind, it hit me a little harder because of that, and I was like, wow, you know, this is awful. And maybe these folks that are doing this, they just don't realize how it's really impacting the people, but it's hurtful, right? It's awful. What I think a good lesson from all this is communication, communication. And that would be something that I'd want to focus on if I was on the school committee, is figuring out, how do we best communicate? How are we, you know, as a community, getting the information out there? First time this has happened, there's always wrinkles, and the first time something happens like this, right? But learning from that and putting a protocol in place so that we, you know, we don't have this issue again. The worst thing you can do, and this is my experience at the, at the West, is the worst thing you could do is not speak up and not say anything, because it blows up in the media and assumptions are made, and that's the hard part. One thing I'll say, and I don't know why, but it's not, it's a little different from this, the hard part I have, my 11-year-old got her a library card. We decided, when you're responsible enough to get it, all right, well, we're going to get you one. So, we did it last year. She was 10. The two books she took out was The Diary of Anne Frank and a book on the Holocaust. We had the staff, I'm getting goosebumps, we had the staff at the library walk around, and I wanted to find a book on the Holocaust that was age-appropriate. We were there for a while, and she took them out. This isn't, you know, this isn't something that is taken lightly. You know, my daughter, she, 10-years-old, she feels for this situation, this awful thing that happened in history. So, I just think it's important for people to know that and understand that, and I know that there are things being done now to communicate. I know that, you know, now they have, you know, an open forum. There's a couple days, right, where students can come in and talk, and I think that's great. But it'd be great, too, for parents just to take that moment to kind of, you know, let them read that book, you know? Let them have that opportunity to learn about it a little more, even if it's not your religion or not something that has impacted your ancestors. It doesn't mean it's not something that they shouldn't learn about, because this kindness goes a long way.
Well, I think also with a situation like this, it bears importance to stress that something like this isn't acceptable.
Yeah, yeah.
In telling the community, sending a message to the community that these actions don't have a place in Stoughton.
Yeah, they don't. It's no place for hate, right? We, first, first community, right? What I've read is the student that, I like to, what do I say to my girls? I say, you know, bad decisions, it wasn't, that wasn't a good decision, bad decision on that student's part, and I think that that student had six-day suspension from what I read, and that's, that's a lengthy suspension. I'm hoping that that student got out of that what, what they needed. And then, there's the other part, right, which is the, the teacher component.
Sure.
Yeah, you know?
How does a school committee get involved with something like that, where you, you have teachers being disciplined?
Yeah. What I understand from being at the school committee meeting and what was noted is that when the STA comes forward and they put through a grievance, that's when the school committee gets involved. It gets to a certain stage, and that's when they get involved. So, I love, I love the teachers of Stoughton. Like, the teachers at the West are phenomenal. Like, I've, my daughter's fifth-grade teacher, she's been there for a long time, and she's amazing. She's helped me do so much with Morgan. Basically, these teachers in all of the schools, they help us raise our kids. Our kids are with them for a majority of the day. They help us raise our kids, so I, you know, my daughter's moving to the middle school next year, and, you know, my youngest is still going to be at the school, and I emailed a teacher, I think it was like in October, I emailed her fifth-grade teacher and said, my husband and I are against social media for that age, but I have concerns with her walking from the middle school to the West and meeting, you know? We really are considering getting her a cellphone. Very tiny, like, to us, it wasn't. It was because of the way we feel, but I made that decision with that teacher's input. That's how important they are. You know what I mean? Like, you know, bringing it back to the teachers at the high school, it would, it would be nice to be able to see what, what, it's harsh, it's a harsh penalty, but I'd like to see why. I'd like to see that third-party investigation, like, understand it to see what happened. And that's the only thing I could say. I don't really know much about it, other than what I saw at the school committee meeting and what I've read.
So, you know, certainly other issues going on with the, the schools, and, and so overall, where do you feel the school does from a performance standpoint, you know, when it comes to student achievement, testing, you know, the, compared to other districts, compared to, you know, other places in the, in the state? Where do you feel Stoughton is and where can it go?
Stoughton in general?
Yes.
Well, one of the, so, we're a Level 2 district. First, can I toot West School for a second? So, when I got there, it was a Level 3. Now, it's a Level 2, and it's been a Level 2 for a couple years now, so that's really exciting for me. And that's English language learning students. Their first language is not English. I'm one of those kids. I'm Portuguese. My family came from Portugal. I'm the youngest of six kids, and the, the main thing is, I went through all that, and you become who you are through that experience in school. So, them being a Level 2 is a big deal to me. But being a Level 2 district, I think that Stoughton, if we can, if we constantly compare Stoughton to other districts, we're at a disadvantage. We have an amazing band at the high school, like, top-notch, right? Our music programs in this town are amazing. Recently, just heard that superintendent, the prior superintendent just recently passed. That was one of the big things that, you know, he had, he had spoken about, which is, you know, you know, the Stoughton High School has this amazing music department, and that's something we should be highlighting, and that's something that, you know, we'll go places with. And that is, for me, one of the things that we should highlight and talk about, comparing that we're a Level 2 district with Easton, Canton, Sharon. I don't think you can. We're a diverse community. We're different than the other communities. You know, I, again, I think that if you separate it and you take it by each school and the, you know, how they've done individually, that's really where you look at it. You know, you know, again, West, I'm, I'm proud that my kids go there. I had parent choice. I could have sent them to another school, and I sat down with the principal of the West six years ago and decided this is, I'm going to invest in this community, so.
And you mentioned you have a financial background. Of course, the budget, always a big topic, and one of the main roles of a school committee. So, with the budget, how do you balance providing the funds needed to provide a good education for the students in Stoughton, but also keeping in mind that it's one pie that everybody, the town side, the school side? There's public safety concerns, there's needs for other departments in town as well. How do you balance that all and keep that in mind?
Yeah, that's, so, talking about all of the different areas that need help, you can't, you can't deny that we need, you know, public safety, there, you know, you've got to respect our, the public safety officials. But also in the schools, which is why I'm running for school committee, that's my main focus. You know, we, we want to make sure that the kids have an environment that's conducive to learning. So, you know, if it's a matter of, you know, lighting or the building that they're in, you want to make sure that they're in an area that they can actually focus and learn and that they're not restricted. Look at the high school with spacing, right, in the science lab. They needed that space virtual, you know, science, you know, wasn't, isn't something that you really, you want for your kids. So, you have to look at, what are the kids? I look at it, again, from a school committee perspective for the schools. I look at it as, you know, my experience with the budget at the West. You have to shift. Like, taking, if you take from one, you're taking from a lot, right? So, you have to really stop and look at the budget and see how you're spending things. And, and a lot of the times, what I've had to do is I had to say, all right, let's stop, let's look at this and look at how we're spending it, and we might need to shift things here and here, but ultimately, a year or two from now, we're going to be able to do this, this, and this. And that's where we are at the West with the PTO. You know, this year, we're able to provide a lot more great things based on shifts and changes, but you don't want to take away. I think that, you know, that does a disservice to the families, you know, the taxpayers totally understand the need for public safety. You know, I just, I have a high respect for our fire and police officers, so, you know, that's, I think that's something that the school committee and the selectmen would have to work together. You know, you want to, you want to make sure that you put a logical plan together and that you can agree to disagree, like I say, and bring things to the table. But I'm not sure, and Jeff, I don't know, you know, how you'd agree, but I think when you take things away, sometimes there's issue. You know, if you pull, if you pull one domino out of that chain, right, maybe the rest doesn't go, so.
So, with the, following up on the budget, there's been back-and-forth debate about where to place certain things in the budget. For example, should, you know, the police be paying for the school resource officers or the crossing guards or school security and, or should the schools, do you feel that that's some, where do you feel that that should be coming from? Should it be coming from the, the school budget, police budget, something different?
It's interesting that you say that. So, the past three years, Dr. Rizzi had a town-wide school council, so I joined that as well. Forgot to mention that in the opening.
Here's your perfect opportunity, right?
So, I would go for when the budget was reviewed. Again, I couldn't recite the budget line for line. If I were to be on the school committee, I'd definitely be more in tune with what's in there, but we'd walk through, and I did see the school resource officers on there. At the time, I, you know, I questioned because it was something that was going to be proposed, but then taken out based on discussion. Not sure, not sure how I feel. Would if, and these are the type of questions I ask, and again, I know you don't know the answer, I don't know the answer, but my question would be, if we were to put that on the school budget, does that mean additional police officers would be hired in those, you know, slots at the police station? If the answer is yes, then let's talk about that and really see where the benefit is. If the answer is no, then I'm still, I need to understand, though, what's the, the cost-benefit to that? You know what I mean? Really, I would just want to know the answers to that. But I did see that in the budget a couple years ago, and I questioned it and asked, and it was said, well, actually, that's going to come out, because it was discussed and agreed it wouldn't be in the budget. But I know, I know. But if you, again, if you take something out, you have to, you know, what's going to go in its place? And that goes back to my question of, if that was to go into the school budget, what would you have to move or take out here, the school budget? But also, we're taking that out of this budget, right, in the public safety, so are we adding staff to that, right?
Now, with the high school building being passed, the voters approving the funding of it, that's obviously, that was the biggest goal for the district in terms of its capital spending. But the district is trying to get a statement of interest through for the South Elementary School and try to get that process going. And then, when you start to consider the South Elementary School, when it was built, you look at the school that you're part of, the West School, built around the same time, Hanson School around the same time, and in fact, the newest school in Stoughton is, was built in '69 or '70, so going, you know, on 45, 50-years-old. So, that being said, is it, would you be willing to, as a school committee member, have the discussion or look into perhaps, rather than replacing each of these buildings, building by building, going to like a system like a Mansfield where there's a K-2 school, a 3 through 5, a middle school, and then a high school, as opposed to what we have right now?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I, I see some of those towns. Easton is a town that has, you know, what's it, K-2, then they go 3 to 5, and they join the whole town at 3 to 5, and then it goes, yeah. And I think that I actually like that system. Doesn't, doesn't mean that it would fit in this town, but I think it's a nice thing to discuss.
Just from a capital standpoint?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I think it's a great, what I've seen from that change, too, it's amazing to see when the whole town of kids merge at that younger grade level and become friends, whereas, you know, they're in sixth grade and they merge. I know when I went to junior high, I'm dating myself, but it was seventh and eighth grade, which I liked because it was the older grade levels, but I see, I see a difference in, in my friends that attend, you know, the Easton Public Schools, where they might have had their, their, you know, learning in the smaller realm, but then once they got to, to the joint 3 to 5 grade, it was collaborative, great, the facility, it's big enough to house that, and it's one facility, which I think is a great option. So, being a project manager, I, you have to expect the worst, but you always have to be prepared for the worst. I always, at work, they'll go, you know, how did you know? I go, I always prepare for the worst. I always have a backup plan. Even if things are perfect, you have to have a backup plan. You have to consider that. You have to think about that. So, I think in those discussions, I would ask the questions based off my experience as a project manager, which would be, did we talk about this? Did we talk about this? Or what about this? Might not fit, but I'm going to ask it, right? And, and that's the key thing. It doesn't always have to be the status quo, and it doesn't, like you're saying, you know, that is a great option, but that's something that would have to be discussed and figured out, yeah.
Lastly, the, let's talk about the inner workings relations with, between board members themselves and the board in general. How do you, do you feel the school committee functions at its highest capacity right now?
Um, no, I don't. You know, I'm, it's, it's interesting, you know, seeing what's going on now and being at the last school committee meeting, you know, and just how, you know, all of the members, you know, had worked together. And I've been to meetings, and I've, I've seen some things that were kind of appalling, which threw me off, and I was like, ooh, do I really want to, you know, put my name in the hat here? But that's why I did it. You can't get anything done if there's constant headbutting, right? But you also can't get anything done if you come into things with the one thought of, I just don't like this, right? You have to come in with an open mind and just say, you know, we're all different person. At work, the best thing you can do, for me, if you build a team, is different personalities, right, that complement each other. You should never have the same person type, you know, personality type on a team. The reason being is, if we were to put an orange in the middle of the table and they were to ask you, you know, how would you, how would you, you know, eat that? Your answer would be totally different than mine, and I might go, man, that's a really good answer. And I would take what, I can't tell you at work how many times you've looked at something differently because they looked at it from a totally different perspective. You know what I mean? So, yeah, I don't think you can get anything done, but I think that, you know, my being on the board, I, I'm a straight shooter, obviously.
Well, yeah, actually, let's use this opportunity, because the time actually just expired. I want to give you 20 seconds just to give you, to wrap up and give you a pitch to voters as to why, why they should cast one of their two votes for you.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm passionate, I'm a, you know, I'm a straight shooter. I've volunteered a lot of time in Stoughton Public Schools. You know, I, I have a passion for that. I have two children that are attending Stoughton Public Schools and will remain in Stoughton Public Schools, you know, with the new high school opening September of 2019. My daughter will be starting in 2020, and I want to be there for that. I want to be on, I want to make sure that, you know, we as a community, it's all, it's a community as a whole, that we start to get progress in the school committee and that we can all work together. I want to bring my expertise from my, from my, you know, project management job to make sure that we can all work together, and, you know?
Well, thank you, and I really appreciate you joining us today, and I want to thank Michael Hammond for directing, and thank you for tuning in to this edition of Stoughton Spotlight, Conversations with the Candidates, reminding you to vote in the town, upcoming Town Election. There are three candidates running for two spots on the school committee, and make sure you watch our other interviews with the selectmen and moderator candidates. I'm Jeffrey Pickett. Thanks for tuning in.